Posted on the Kinnalawn Public Library, filed with the public, the borough clerk, and posted on the district website. Caitlin, would you call the board, please?
Yes, Mrs. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mrs. Perella?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
Here.
Mrs. Portman?
Here.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Here. We'll have a closed session at the end, not at the beginning, so if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Routine matters. We have approval of the minutes for the 20, August 26 regular meeting and the August 26 executive session. Can I have motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. And can you pull the board?
Exactly. Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perella?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the Kinnalawn Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the appointment of Luca Anello Florino as the student representative to the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year. Welcome to the board, Luca. You can proceed with your update.
To begin, we would like to thank our Keel Cisco staff, students, and families for an amazing start to the school year. The students who participated in our preschool open house and our kindergarten and new student orientations came in ready to start the year in a great way, as did our returning students in first and second grade. A special thank you to Keisha for a much appreciated welcome back lunch for our staff earlier in the month. Back to school night at the Keel Cisco schools was very well attended. We appreciate the parents who came out to learn about the wonderful things that take place in our schools and the faculty who continue to nurture these things. DOT Day, an international celebration of creativity, courage, and collaboration, was celebrated by our students on September 15th, participated by wearing dots and in a variety of other activities. Additionally, an ice cream social on September 24th and Pete the Cat Day on September 26 were held. We thank both Keisha for their contributions and Mr. Mango for his appearance as Pete the Cat. Furthermore, the 2025-2026 school year is off to a fabulous start at the Stony Brook Elementary School. We'd like to thank our amazing staff, students, and families for a great start. On the first day of school, Principal Utell met with all students in a school-wide assembly to welcome everyone back and to share information about the upcoming school year. We'd also like to thank Keisha for our teacher welcome back to school lunch and Cedar Crest for sending their well wishes to our staff. In addition to Keel Cisco, DOT Day was celebrated on September 15th, and it was a great, it was great to see students participating in various creative activities. Back to school night was also a huge success, and we would like to thank all of our teachers for opening their classrooms and talking about the upcoming school year, as well as the families that attended. Fall Picture Day was held on September 17th, and the Technology Club for fourth and fifth grade students began on September 24th. A special thanks to Mrs. Bosch for offering this to our students. As for the arts, Stony Brook Theater Club is up and running, and we will be presenting their fall show, The Addams Family Junior, in November. We would like, we would lastly like to wish the best of luck to the fifth grade choir students who are planning to audition to perform at the Rockefeller Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on December 3rd. The new school year is off to an excellent start at PRM. Thank you to our staff, students, and families for a great opening to the school year. Mrs. Yosefides and Mr. Suda conducted class meetings with each grade level to review important school procedures and positive expectations for a spirited school year. Back to school night was a huge success. Thank you, teachers, for sharing your enthusiasm with parents and to all of our families who attended. PRM Picture Day will be held on October 9th, and PRM Spirit Week will be from October 13th to the 17th. Students and staff will enjoy an ice cream social, Pinkout Day, Jersey Day, Pyjama Day, and a Color Day pep rally. PRM will also hold its annual Veterans Day Recognition Assembly on November 14th. In closing, KHS has had an amazing start to the school year with the welcome back convocation for students and staff on Wednesday, August 27th, and the grade level meetings on Thursday, August 28th. On September 2nd, a co-curricular club and activity fair was held to showcase our offerings at KHS and to encourage students to get involved, followed by the Senior Sunrise on September 4th. In observance, in observance of September 11th, all KHS students and staff participated in the 9/11 Memorial and Museums Digital Learning Experience, an assembly that taught students about the past and present impacts that we are left with. Juniors and seniors attended the KHS College Fair during the day on September 15th with nearly 90 college and university representatives from near and far. Additionally, on September 18th, the Counseling Department hosted an information session titled Senior Parent Night for College Applications. The Fall Pep Rally took place on Friday, September 26th, recognizing our tremendous athletes and their accomplishments. A special thank you also goes out to the Student Council and the Pep Band for their contributions to a great afternoon, as well as Samantha Ferretti for coordinating the event and Alice Levy for singing the Star Spangled Banner. Lastly, rehearsals for KHS's The Great Gatsby are underway. We are looking forward to many remarkable events such as the Week of Respect, the Homecoming Game and Dance, and eighth grade, and new student orientation. Thank you.
Thank you, Luca. Superintendent's update.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. President. Welcome, everybody. September, I can't believe it's September 30th, but, but here we are, a month into the school year, and even though Luca has been officially sworn in, Luca, I want to welcome you to our table. I'm looking forward to working with you. I know, Mom and Dad, I've told you this a million times before, you did a tremendous job in raising your son, so I look forward to his energy and his enthusiasm here with us all year, and a lot of good things could happen. So, we, we had a communication during the summer as well about baseball, so I look forward to more, so you have to relay that to myself and the board. Okay? All right. So, just some dates for you to, to, to look at. Eighth grade open house is next Thursday in this very room. It'll kick off with Mrs. Alawale, Mr. Arroyo, and company. And then at our October 28th public meeting, we did conduct a strategic plan two years ago, which I know for some folks maybe gets lost, or maybe you don't remember, but that's a five-year plan. It's an active, fluid document. So, what'll happen is at the October 28th public meeting, under my report and this update, central office will all be up here, and we will go bullet by bullet to, to inform you of where we've been and where we're going as far as obtaining the goals and objectives within. On November 18th, very important at that public meeting, there'll only be a three-week span because of the holiday and Thanksgiving, Ms. Lawler and I will be up in front discussing every project that we've done facility-wise, beginning January 1 of 2023. So, I started officially on Monday, I believe it was October 24th of 2022, so this starts, this timeline, because that kind of segues into, I'm gonna skip down below, to the LRFP, the Long Range Facility Plan. Every school district's required to have one. Ours is a little outdated. As you know, we've had some changes in the business office the last few years, but now that we have stability, we are working with our architect, myself, Ms. Lawler, the district team, and the board, and we will have a revised LRFP that will fall in line with our facility assessment and all of our projects and timelines. Earlier in CAC, I discussed the proposal for a topographical survey which we submitted for. That, that includes the KHS multipurpose field to go turf, the walkway from the far locker room to Spiros Field, and the outdoor cafeteria here at the high school for an enclosure. That cost right now is $25,000, and we did run that through committee, and all of our committees are pretty happy with that result, but, you know, we're just looking, can we get a little bit of a lesser price? We're not sure. We're trying to do that, Ms. Lawler and I, but regardless, we're gonna hold off to see where we stand with, it wasn't a budgeted item, where we stand with our budget as the next few months kind of take place. We do have needs in other buildings, and if we feel we're, we're strong financially, then maybe after the reorganization meeting, we'll move that forward. That was part of a district goal, to have a quote on what that would cost and where we would be. We are working with the vendor Pure Tech in this, for this very room, on the acoustic and audio upgrade for all of our performances, our drama club, our performing arts, our band, our music, so on and so forth. They're looking to commence on, in January of 2026. That'll start. PRM, PRM and KHS start-end times, those discussions are well underway. Schedules are being discussed and transportation consolid, consolidation. So, what I'd like to do is have that information, that's a budgetary, obviously, a budgetary impact, so we'll have that information out no later than February. So, in March, typically in the first week of March, we present the preliminary budget for the following school year. The board votes, we send it to the county, county says yes or says no, and then we have, gives us six weeks to finalize the final budget. What we'd be looking to do, we have to have this information before then when we make our proposal, and while, you know, it's not the board's position or job to enforce or influence schedules, it is their job to know what we're doing. So, that's what we're looking to do. And Keel, Stony Brook, and PRM, all the security surveillance is up and functioning. Interior gates are functional, with the exception of Keel, we have some, some concerns there that we're discussing with, with chief and the fire department with the gates, but for the other three buildings are all up and functional, and, you know, I, I don't want to be a downer at the end of my update before Mrs. Trombetta's presentation, but all you have to do is look, and you see security everywhere. We can never be too sure, you can never be too safe. If somebody intends to do something, they're gonna do their best to do it. So, I always have said, and I'll continue to say, that you know something more often than not, you think something, you gotta say something, you have to tell us, because that's our best resource. And, you know, I won't, I won't go in the weeds, but in another district in a planet far away, there were more than one occasion where if it wasn't for one or two of our students, I don't know how that day would have ended. So, you know, it happens. So, you can never think, oh, we're in Kinnalawn, not here. I don't think so. I don't think so. So, thank you, Mr. Shivas, for continuing that security initiative, and thank you to the board for supporting it. And with that, Mrs. President, that's my update, and I'm gonna call up Mrs. Trombetta for the NJSLA. She promised it'll be less than 12 minutes. And, oh, one more thing, if I would be remiss if I didn't say, that part of school is sports and activities, and while I always say and believe and thought even when I was a young person that it was a privilege to wear the colors, to wear the uniform, you have to have a certain code of conduct, so on and so forth, it's part of what we do in all high schools across America. And this fall, we're off to a strong start. I know our girls soccer playing strong, our boys, boys are on the upswing, tennis is doing very well, and Chegg's with, with cross-country, she's a, she's a staple, and I'm superstitious, so I don't want to put it into the atmosphere too much, but I'll take 5-0 in football any day of the week, any day of the week. And I still offer, as I did in that, I think, I wanna say it was contested, but when we had a big crowd in February when we were talking about Stony Brook and this and that and all this other kind of stuff last year, everybody knows where I am, so anytime a parent wants to come talk to me about leaving Kinnalawn, I moved here for Kinnalawn, and I'm saying that as the superintendent where my child goes to school. So, anybody wants to have a discussion with me about our academics, our programs, what we offer, what somebody else offers, how we do it, what we have and our sports, I'd be happy to have it with them. So, just, I'm gonna continue to push that forward. I know Mrs. Alawale's gonna push it next week in eighth grade open house, and, Mrs. President, that concludes my report. I'm happy to be here, so thank you. Mrs. Trombetta, floor is yours. No, I do? Oh, sorry. I got so excited, I forgot. Culinary arts, next year. So, it's in the process, we budgeted a million dollar, no, we drew down 750,000 in the current budget, but we didn't use that, obviously, just yet, and we did meet with the architect, our, our district architect to record, so there are the preliminary drawings. It's an open space, an open concept, and this is one view of what it'll look like. And Mrs. Alawale, she's, you know her from Keel, now she's up here. She's very much into the colors and into the mantra, into the signage, so I know she's gonna fill that space real quick, and there's the other side. So, that would really round out that survey that we sent to our students, your children, last year, grade six through 11, what would you like to see in the high school? Well, we went out, we found an excellent industrial arts teacher, Mr., Mr., is it Leck? All right? And, and he also brought a fishing program, he's, he's implementing a home repair program here at the high school, so we found, we searched, that was based on our, our kids. We brought the theater, based on our kids. We're doing culinary arts, based on our students. We were fortunate enough with some show movement and smart budgeting, not foolish budgeting, to be able to manage this. So, our students have a voice. Yeah, I'm a little bit excited, so. I feel. Jay? No? Okay. All right, Mrs. Trombetta, now you have the fun with the results.
So, each year at the September board meeting, we're required to report on our state assessment results from the spring of the previous, from the previous school year, so tonight I'm here to share those results with you. So, just a little background information, in the spring, our students participate in the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for math and ELA. The, so the students who take that assessment, they are students in grades three through nine for English Language Arts as well as math, and then beginning in grade seven, and this is something important to note just later for when you're looking at some of the, the scores, the students who are enrolled in high school math courses, so we have students in as low as grade seven enrolled in high school courses, so they take the assessment associated with that high school course, so they no longer are taking the assessment associated with their cohort. So, that's just something important to note. The scoring levels are on a one-to-five scale, levels four and five, those are the target, so four and, four is meeting grade level expectations, five is exceeding, so that's a lot of the focus here is looking at that target and how many of our kids reached that target. And this presentation, it's scheduled to post at 8:45 tonight on the website, so, and then it's a lot of numbers, I'm gonna go through some of it pretty quickly, but it will be posted later, so you can go back and take a look. So, this is just the comparison of our ELA percentages across the board from three through nine compared to the state at each level, so four and five, like I mentioned, that's the target, that green columns, those are us. I put, I made this in a visual, so it's a little bit easier to see, so you can see where we stand, where the green compared to the state, so, you know, awesome performance in ELA, outperforming the state across the board. Same thing for math, so where we stand versus the state, four and five, those targets, the green, and then this is the visual for math, so again, outperforming the state across the board. Kinnalawn is the green. And then seven and eight, those, again, I have those stars because we don't have our full cohort of kids taking this assessment, and you'll see across the board state, and both here and across the state, those tend to be a little bit lower because the cohorts are distorted as kids are taking different courses. NJSLA, science, that's also taken in the spring. That's a little different, it's taken by our fifth, eighth, and 11th graders. This is a science test where it's, it's covering several years of science, so it's not just a specific what they did in that year, it's over several years, so it's assessing the science, like the band, these standards are banded, so it's assessing what they've learned over several courses. And the scoring is a little different, it's a one through four, where three is the target, so three and four is what we're looking at for science. Same makeup here, district versus state, this is what that looks like at a glance, so, you know, exceeding expect, or, you know, outperforming the state, and then just in line with state for eighth and 11th grade. And then as far as, this is just looking at our percentages of our kids who are at that target, so this is just looking at the overall of who's at a three and a four together. All right. So, now, this, again, this is kind of, it's very repetitive, but it's looking at our percent of kids who are at that target, so what is that percentage? So, you'll see, this is that ELA percentage for Kinnalawn grades three through nine, and I think it's super important to, rather than comparing fourth grade from this year to fourth grade of last year, looking at those core cohorts. So, what I did was I, I put the, the grade level cohort and how they did compared to their scores of last year, so how are our students growing? That's how our, our teachers' SGP scores are calculated, they look at the growth that kids have made, so I made this visual just to show you, our fourth graders, that's their scores compared to their third grade scores. Our fifth grades, those are their scores compared to their fourth grade scores, so just looking at their ELA scores and how they grew from last year to this year, or from 2023 to, 24 to 25. Same for math, so, and anything that doesn't have a number, that means we didn't have enough in that group to report on. Our Algebra II scores, I will tell you, are, were very amazing, but I can't report on them because there's not enough kids, but this, these are our four, levels four and five of our kids who are at that target. And then just to clarify, so our seventh and eighth grade, those are skewed because our kids, they're tracked and they're in higher level courses, so in total, our seventh grade cohort was at 70%, and in total, our eighth grade cohort was at 58%. So, the individual eighth grade test looks a lot lower, but it's a very small subset of students that are taking that test. And then again, this is that cohort comparison, so how did our fourth grade kids do compared to their third grade year? How did our fifth grade kids do compared to that fourth grade year? So, you'll see, you know, there's some growth, there's some dips here and there, but overall, you'll see, you know, some great gains. And then this is what I mentioned before, the reporting groups, the, the parameters, so 10 is what's required for us to report, so we're required to report on our subgroups where we have 10 or more students, so anything that's greater than 10 is required to be reported publicly, so I've taken that and compiled it. You'll see, we have, for our smaller districts, so a lot of our subgroups we can't report on, so what we're able to are listed here on the next slides. So, this is for ELA, our students with IEPs, so this is just a glance at the percentages for students who are at that level four and five, for students with IEPs in ELA. Same thing for math, students with IEPs, and again, as the higher we go, the, the, those groups, they don't have enough students to report on. Our Asian population for ELA and math, and then Hispanic for ELA and math. So, just in looking at all of this data, compiling it, pulling it apart, some of the challenges that have emerged are that there's some middle school dips, so there's some proficiency declines compared to the elementary levels. Attendance issues, which I'll show you in the next couple of slides, those are significant, especially in grade eight. Algebra I, that's been a challenging area for years, so those challenges still persist, and then science, our elementary proficiency is strong, but then it dips a little bit for the higher levels, so we're like, if you saw that, we're just at what this, where the state is, like a little bit under, so those are some of the challenges that are, you know, emerging from this presentation. Some of the achievements, some things that I think we really should celebrate, our elementary foundation, so our three through five scores were outstanding, with there was really great math and ELA growth. Grade five led the district with 87%. Their absenteeism, which I'll show you on another slide, was very low as well, so there's some connections there, and just some of those gains we can attribute to, we departmentalized last year in grades three through five, so we wanted to just say thank you for your support with that, thank you to the board, Ms. Utell, the community, that was a really huge undertaking, and we did that three through five, so that really sharpened our focus at Stony Brook, and we think that that, you know, we can attribute a lot of this success to that. The IXL Takeoff Math and the Intu Reading Program, so in addition to that, we rolled out two programs, we were really ahead of the curve there, and our teachers really, you know, they were able to focus on those because they were departmentalized, but they, they did those programs with fidelity, and we, we feel like that really contributed to this foundational learning. And then Reveal Math, we expanded it, so we're trying to really strengthen that middle school transition, so we're hoping that this foundation, we can build on it to help those middle school scores. And then science instruction, so you saw some of those dips as we get to eighth and to 11th grade. This year, we have a new curriculum model that was launched, so instead of that spiral model, we are focusing more on each grade level has a specific focus so that kids can go deeper into what they're learning with more focus, so earth science for grade six, life science for grade seven, and physical science for grade eight. So, that's going to replace that spiral model and hopefully improve our outcomes for eighth and 11th grade. So, now, attendance patterns. This is something that I really dove into, and I just wanted to share this, it had a strong connection to our math performance, so I took a look at, with our new system, I was able to really pull apart our attendance specific to our math periods because we, we track period attendance, so students with 15-plus absences during the 24-25 school year, these are our percentages, so fifth grade, the lowest, greatest outcomes. Our grade eight pre-algebra students, we were at 50% of students who are absent 15 or more times, so missing three or more weeks of school. So, just looking at this, and I'll show you a visual in a second, as absenteeism rises, math proficiency is definitely declining, and three and five, you'll see, those are great success models, but then our eighth grade and Algebra I are areas of concern. So, this is just a nice visual seeing attendance against that math proficiency, so not as much of an impact on ELA, but definitely where, you know, the subject is cumulative and it builds, there's, there's an impact here, so just wanted to share this. I know we had, like, last year, we had a lot of talk about corrective action plans with attendance, so that's something we're gonna really have to focus on this year. So, next steps, attendance and engagement, we really want to strengthen and monitor our at-risk students, we want to partner with families to address this chronic absenteeism, and prioritize grade eight and Algebra I with interventions. Curriculum instruction, we want to build on that elementary, that great elementary foundation to stabilize our middle school. We're gonna implement the science pathway so that we can be more focused and aligned, and then Algebra I, we're actually going to expand that Reveal Math, we're going to pilot it for Algebra I at the high school, so we can close some of those gaps, and that's actually up for approval tonight. And then just ongoing data use, we just recently shared the evidence statement analysis to, with our teachers, so we actually get reports on how students performed on those questions for math and ELA, so we, you know, I shared those yesterday, we talked about them at our department meeting, we can see like which questions did they struggle with, use that information for next year's teachers, and, you know, look at what adjustments have to be made, and then just continue to, to track those cohorts and monitor their growth as they move through the, the school district. That's it. Any questions? I know it's a lot, but it will be posted, 8:45, it'll be scheduled to post.
I had a, I had a question about the eighth grade attendance numbers.
Yep.
When you, when you put those up against the test scores, did they include all eighth graders, or did you break them out?
No, so, that's the, that's specific assessment, so that's like the, the kids who are in pre-algebra, eighth grade pre-algebra, so it's not the eighth grade cohort as a whole, because if you look at the eighth grade cohort, they were at 50-something percent passing as a whole when you look at the high school courses that they were in, this is just that subgroup that was taking pre-algebra. They had the highest attendance, so it's not the eighth grade as a whole.
Thank you.
Yep.
Looking at the science scores for eighth and 11th grade, both of those seem to be underperforming compared to the state, and you referenced how we switched away from the spiral model in eighth grade, yet I didn't hear kind of what we're doing to address those science scores in 11th grade. Is it also the same, or is there something different?
So, at the high school, and Hope, if you want to jump in, you can, but at the high school, the courses are specific, you know, bio, chemistry, and we were seeing kids coming into those courses unprepared and struggling in those courses, so we're hoping that, you know, focusing the curriculum at the middle school level will have them more prepared and being able to engage and do better with the material at the high school level, so we're just noticing a lot of gaps, and we're also incorporating physics more, we're offering it to, we're doing an algebra-based physics, so that can be done sooner, so those are some of the science changes that we did, I actually, we should have talked about that in the presentation, but we are offering algebra-based physics so that kids can take it sooner and have it before, rather than taking it senior year only, having that exposure in 11th grade or sooner.
Thanks.
Is physics on the NJSLA in 11th grade?
The, I don't know, Hope, do you know, it's, yeah. All four, all four.
All four are on, so if your kids aren't, haven't had physics, is physics a required?
No.
No, so it's on a test, but it's not a required course?
That's the other thing, it's, bio is the only one that's required, and then the others, it's like two other lab-based physics, so the requirements don't really align with like what's tested.
With the NJSLA requirements, right.
That's a tough, that whole, that test as a whole, I know there's a lot out there with the state, and they don't actually provide us with evidence statement analysis either, like for math and ELA, it's really nice, we get to see like exactly how many of our kids got which question and how they did with it, so like, like yesterday, we were looking, like, there's a functions question that our kids like really struggled with, so we were like digging into that. We don't get that kind of information for the science test, unfortunately. All right. Thank you.
I'm looking for that one slide that you did. Where, um, Mrs. Strombetta? I'm looking for the one with Stony Brook. No, the, the percentage. Specific. Here we go. Mrs. Utel, will you stand up for a second? I asked you to stand up last year in the October meeting because I felt that your, if your reunification drill was the best one that I had ever seen between Morris County, Warren County, and Bergen County. So it's saying a lot. And I have to tell you that, you know, you, you know, we've had private conversations when I was just dad of a Stony Brook student. And now super, the last bunch of years, you and your staff are tremendous. Do a tremendous job. I think it's really important to highlight that right here. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for your staff. They know how I feel about them. And just keep doing it, it's a model. You're welcome, but you're the leader. So you either get the credit or you don't. So I, in this case, you know, you, you get all the complaints, but you have to get some accolades. It's important to recognize, so thank you. That concludes my report, Mrs. President. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mango. Okay, committee reports, finance facilities and security. Carl?
Okay, yeah, so we did meet on the 24th. We had an extremely efficient, rapid-fire meeting. They covered a whole lot of topics. So I'm just going to list them off because it was a lot. So we talked about repairs, Stony Brook HVAC and some speaker repairs for KHS. We did talk about the topographic survey Mr. Mango mentioned earlier. We talked about GPS on school buses, a company that we're currently using. Different, different service will allow us to kind of track the location of the buses, which can be better for security and safety of the kids. Went through a few grant opportunities. Water infrastructure improvement is continuing to be researched. Some tree removal, just for general trimming and safety. Baseball, baseball field maintenance, just a couple of improvements to, you know, the clay, rebuild the pitcher's mound, et cetera. There is a donation for a dugout renovation, which is on the agenda for approval. We went through improvements to the visitor bleachers at KHS. There are waiting quotes, more on that, more on that coming. Did go through the culinary arts, the project, both in the preliminary room design and also some electric, electric improvements as well. Did talk about the LRFP, which Mr. Mango already mentioned. The budget calendar for '26, '27. Again, that's on the reco, that's our, recommended to approve on the agenda today. Talked about pure tech meeting, follow-up there. Stony Brook Sewage Agreement, still under review. So we're just starting to go through that, that, those bits and pieces there. There is a group that has approached us to donate a new, I guess, a flag pole at the football field. So that's starting to kind of come together. Nothing, nothing formalized there, but that's kind of exciting that they want to give us that. That'd be great. Went through the petty cash fund. I believe there's something on the agenda for approval there. Just kind of a revamp of that policy, how it's, how it kind of it's done. Went through a number of security updates. And there's also an interesting tool donation that's also up for approval on the agenda as well. So it was a very, it was only an hour and 15 minutes, but we went through a ton of topics. So that's all I have.
Yeah, we did, we did cover a lot. We were very efficient. And thank you, Caitlin, for being so organized. It was a good meeting. Excuse me, personnel negotiations, Jonathan?
We also had a pretty efficient meeting. A lot of things are pretty standard with appointments and reimbursements and that kind of stuff. I would highlight two things at the very end, which would be, in your agendas, it's on top, page 12, would be new, new job descriptions for part-time district computer tech, part-time custodian, also district nurse coordinator. And the committee recommends those in addition to the rest of what's on the agenda.
Thank you, Jonathan. Education and student activities. Jen, right?
I took the meeting minutes for that most recent meeting. Okay, so we discussed upcoming assemblies. Many of them are being provided by Keisha, so we say thank you to them. Those assemblies are listed in the agenda tonight. We talked about an independent reading survey going out to parents of children grades two through five to give parents the ability to decide how involved they want to be when their child selects an independent reading book. We discussed the Let Grow Experience at Stony Brook and Keel. So September was really used to kind of set up and, and get it planned out. And then October, they'll be implementing it. Also, there was STEAM camp over the summer, and there's a lot of great materials and kits there. So they're going to have a sign-out and have one of the more experienced teachers provide training at a professional day. And then the idea is to bring those kids into the classroom so that they can do some really interesting and exciting STEAM-based projects. They're going to start with Stony Brook and then eventually go into Keel. We took a look at a instructional tech approval for music. We agree with that going forward. We talked about the Reveal Math, like Mrs. Strombetta had just explained. Going to, there's no program in place right now for Algebra One at Kinneland High School, so we're recommending that be approved. AP Computer Science, we discussed the plan for that. Right now, principals is happening and it's going very well. And so the teacher who is teaching that class is continuing to be certified so that they, he can teach Computer Science A next year. Real-time now has like all the fines and fees all in one place. We just started to discuss the pay-to-play, not fine, sorry, fee, the parking fee. Discussed appropriate costs and how it should be organized. We also took a look at the Colony Arts Program and the room plan. And just were updated on the community-based instruction course. That there's a recommended policy change. And then also the baseball field maintenance. Just that was reviewed and the quotes were, were explained.
You want to do policy too?
Okay. All right, and then we met for policy and I don't have my policy notes. It was pretty straightforward meeting though. We, if you look at the agenda, the A, you don't have to right now, but A policies, they're up for a second reading. And the regulations that go along with those, they were a first reading last month. There's no real changes that we discussed about for those. And then two new, either, not new policies, but just slight changes. One is Policy 6620 for petty cash. Just providing the breakout of an additional option for petty cash to be able to be used for our, I always get the name of the, our community-based instruction program. And then Regulation 7510, use of school facilities. Just be able to include a site manager and have the fees be posted there as well. So when anybody from the outside is using our facilities, they're not caught off guard by all the people that will be there to run it and how much it costs for that.
Okay. Yep, I like that we're using experience and then tweaking our policies as things come up. And I really want to, I want to recognize our central office staff because when they find this as an issue, they bring it right to us and say, hey, this isn't in a policy. And that's like, oh, that should be in a policy. Or we're not doing this really as per the policy. So we either change the policy or do it differently. And so we're using real world, real life and changing our policy, which is what we should be doing. So I really appreciate the central office and their attention to detail on these matters. Delegates, do we have anything for New Jersey School Boards Association? Jen, did you do anything? No? Morris County School Boards, have they met yet? Carl? No, I don't think they have yet. Legislative, or is that?
Yeah, the Wednesday after Labor Day, whatever day that was, we had a committee for the Morris County Legislative Committee. And there's a good group of folks from all kinds of different towns in Morris County. We have another meeting tomorrow. So it, it's, it's useful just to hear what's going on in other districts. And we're kind of coming up with, you know, let's find the two or three things that we can work together and reaching out. And you might, if anybody's going to the School Boards Association meeting in Atlantic City, you might see some of them down there talking to other counties as well, so.
That's a new initiative that I think the school boards came up with, or was it just the county? Was it the county initiative, do you remember, that to do this?
That I don't, that I don't.
Yeah, we, we got an email, yeah. They asked for each of the school boards to provide a representative to talk about legislative situ, you know, just to have them discussing legislative initiatives and then pick stuff that within the county that people are kind of interested in to inform legislatures from actual school boards. School Boards Association has a representative there, but there are so many school boards that this is actually a much better way to get a rep from each board to come and kind of talk about legislative issues. And I would love for you to talk to them about NJSLA and the overtesting. That would be awesome. Okay, so educational services, have, you guys haven't met yet, right?
They have board meetings every month, but the next meeting that I can go to is January.
Okay. Community relations, KEA, do you guys do anything? Cal, you haven't done that yet, okay. K cares, you, no. Okay, and the KAF, where that's actually on me to kind of coordinate this because I actually do have some points of contact from previous members. So I will be working on that, Carl, and let you know. I found actually some more information on the KAF, yeah. So I actually set up a meeting right before Labor Day, but then it just didn't, we all, it didn't work out. So I'll, I'll keep you informed on that. Okay, all right, so now we have petitions and hearings of citizens for agenda items. If anybody has anything they want to come up and address the board regarding agenda items? Anybody, anything online? Jay? Nothing? Okay, all right. We'll go to agenda items, A through D. I'd like to make a motion for a roll call on a block vote, block vote for agenda items A, B, C, and D. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
All right, discussion on agenda items A, B, C, and D.
All right, Mrs. Leonard?
Does anybody have any discussion, any questions on? Nope, I think we covered everything in the committee meetings. Do you have anything?
I just want to say one thing I want to thank. Mr. Nigle, Mrs. Castellano Smith, and the entire baseball booster club. I know we had a, a big back and forth all summer long. Not only about the field at PRM and donations, but also, which is also on here, Field Trip for the varsity baseball team to Vero Beach. And in my previous district, we had multiple high school teams that would do this, basketball, softball, and baseball. It's a great experience for the students. It's a great experience for the families. So I don't know, I mean, I've been here three years. This is the first time anything came to me of this nature and magnitude. So I want to thank them because it's the parents, in this case, that have to put the work forward. And they did. It's my pleasure to bring it forward and for us, you know, to approve. And who knows, maybe our other sports programs that want to follow suit and have those opportunities in the future.
Well, football does. Football does a summer camp, yeah.
But this is a little bit, slightly different.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great opportunity. They did a lot of work, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Sharah, for all your effort to get that to us quickly so we could approve it. Okay, any other discussion or points? No, okay, you can pull the board, please.
That's right. Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perala?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, okay, you're welcome. Committee of the whole, we don't have anything for committee of the whole. Unfinished business, does anybody have any unfinished business? No, new business? No, correspondence, do we have any correspondence? Any, anything online? Okay, petitions and hearings of citizens for non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. We're going to save board member comments because we do have to go into executive session. So. Whereas open public meetings.
Jean, excuse me?
Sorry.
I think when you said non-agenda items, somebody was getting up. I think somebody was getting up.
Did have, oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
This actually might fall under agenda items, I'm not sure. The budget calendar that was laid out, that's for 2026 to 2027.
Yes.
So the attendance on the buses to decide, the board goal to decide, we see what it would cost if they get rid of, if you guys get rid of the courtesy busing. That would then be for 2027 to 2028? Because that's not going to be done before this budget year?
No, that would also be '26, '27. So we'll bring all that information out.
So even though you're not going to have the information until June, it'll go into the budget that's being voted on this year?
We'll have information as the, we have information now as a, as the year progresses. So when we're going into budget, remember, the final budget isn't approved till almost April 30th.
Okay.
So that's a, that's a very large block of the school year, so we would know. But that information will be discussed publicly well before the final budget, I promise you that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name?
Catherine Simptner.
Can you spell your last name? Thank you.
Sorry about that, didn't see your hand up. Okay, so we are going to go to an executive session. Whereas Public, Open Public Meeting Act permits a public body to meet in closed session, discuss certain items. And that law requires that the board adopt a resolution at the meeting to go into executive session before, be, therefore be resolved that the Kinneland Board of Education has decided it's necessary to meet in closed session, discuss potential litigation. There'll be no decisions made in this. Be it further resolved that the Kinneland Board of Education reserves the right to discuss other matters and that the minutes of this session will be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion to go into exec?
Motion.
Second, second.
Okay, the public part of the meeting has now been over, so I wish you all a great night and we'll see you.